Good evening. We call to order the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. We note that all our council members are present in attendance tonight. We'll begin with an opening ceremony and we turn to Councilmember Jake P. Sima.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening, everyone. If you're trying to repeat the pledge of allegiance with me, I'm going to have a brief presentation. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and here's the envelope for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mayor may or may not know that this week is the beginning of the Lunar New Year, which is celebrated by many of our Asian communities here in the city, which we definitely celebrate our diversity here. On behalf of our community, I've invited some of my family members and friends to come and perform a traditional blessing to wish our city government, all of our city businesses, organizations, and especially all of you as residents, a very happy New Year.
Maybe you might want to introduce your performers. They got plenty of exercise there.
We are, uh, these are some of the members of the Jonghim Lion Dance Club, which was founded here in Utah in 1976. Members of my family, other folks who live right here in West Valley as well. And we've been doing this for about fifteen hundred years.
The great thing about these celebrations is that they go on, the New Year is celebrated for about three months, they told me. Could be.
Pretty extensive celebration.
Yeah. And I've been to two of the celebrations and a third one coming up. So, great opportunity to see the culture and the great traditions that are shared here in our city. Thank you. And with that, let's see. Okay, we have some scouts here tonight. And so I think, hopefully you've been prepped, you're ready to introduce yourselves, your pack number and your, where you go to school, what you're working on, what you're doing here tonight. Thank you. Come up here and speak into the microphone so everyone can hear you.
We are scout number thirty-five sixty-six. My name is Erin Cook and we are working on building a better world badge. So Austin, I am with the Kansas City Chief Ed. He goes to Diamond Ridge Elementary French Immersion. Young Ho goes to Fox Hills Elementary. And Sam Breeze goes to Neil Armstrong Academy. And I go to Carl Sandberg Elementary.
Great, representing across the city, that's great. Thank you very much for coming tonight. And I think that's the only scout troop, can't see quite around the corner, so the rest of you are here for other business. Okay. Thank you, then we'll go on to our approval of our minutes. Minutes of February sixth. Or let's see. Oh, and we also have our, you've had a chance to review them, January nineteenth and twentieth from our strategic plan meeting. So, several sets of minutes. Three different days. Move for approval of the minutes of February sixth, January nineteenth, and January twentieth, 2018. Any discussion of those minutes? Seeing no discussion, then all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed saying no, passes unanimously, the minutes are approved. Next, we go to our public comment period. In our meetings, we have a time set aside for public comment. I will mention that we will have a separate public comment period for the, we have two of those tonight on two applications. So when I go through here, if you're here to speak on an item, those two items on our agenda, let's see, the property on Fifty-four Fifty West and the property on South Winton Street. If you're here to speak to those, we will handle those separately. This portion is for citizens to make comments on any issue that they would like. We do not go into a discussion, it's not a debate. They just present the items they want to, and then we will review those and put them on a future agenda typically. So, as I go through here, if you're here to speak to one of those two applications, just wave and pass and we'll get to you in a few minutes. Okay, so Julie Fisher? Okay. Stacy Ireland? So, for later, John Christopher? Or wait, yeah, I think that's John. For Julie? Can't read it. Okay. It helps if, I grew up in Utah, so I went to a small southern Utah school, so I struggled some. Justin Anfinsen?
Yeah, I've got other stuff.
You're gonna wait. And Doyle Griffith? Waiting. Jason Hanson? Waiting. Drew Drury? Waiting. Oh, no, you're gonna take now. Not related to those two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Drew Drury. I've operated Native American Trading Post in West Valley City since 1988. At our current location at Thirty-nine Seventy-one South Redwood Road since 2004. I've come this evening to ask for a variance, and I'm not sure if that's the correct term, for the Bluebird Taco Stand that operates in our parking lots on Saturdays. Elway's Padres has operated this stand almost continuously since 2004. Last year, she purchased a twenty-six-foot self-contained vending trailer to better serve her customers and make things cleaner. And that's a nice, that's a nice-looking trailer. And she was recently been made aware that she needed a setting vending license, and she had applied with the county and done all of the things, thought she was in compliance, and found out that she was not. She went to apply for a vending license and was told that those licenses are only available in April, and they are for the year, that's the only time that you can get them. Her business serves two purposes. One, it's a, it's a great place to eat. And recently, she was written up in City Weekly as being the best Navajo Taco Stand in the valley. And it, her menu includes such things as, it's a traditional one for the Navajos, Navajo Taco, roast mutton sandwiches, fried ribs, Navajo burgers, and blue corn mush. And second, it's a gathering place for Native American people and their families on the Wasatch Front. And if you may or may not be aware, the Wasatch Front is, is home to the third-largest population of Navajo people in particular in major cities in the United States. It's Los Angeles first, Phoenix second, and Salt Lake City third. And, and I have, I have with me a petition here of over three-hundred-and-fifty customers that were upset that she wasn't in the parking lot anymore, and they blamed me for that. And I said, "That doesn't have anything to do with me, it's a, it's a city thing." And they said, "Well, can we help you do that?" And I said, "Well," so someone started a petition, we put it on the counter anyway. It went for a couple of weeks and we had a lot of people that were in support of this. As I understand it, there are fifteen vending licenses available in West Valley City. Only eleven of those are currently being used. So it would not be a, it would not be a violation of the number of licenses to, to let her operate for the next about six weeks until she can apply formally. She would be willing to pay the full year's licensing fee if that's, if that's what's required or anything, or anything to comply with the regulations of West Valley City. And, as I say, she has, she purchased this trailer in her, in her, and she, being self-sustaining, she sent a couple of kids to college doing this, and it's an important part of her income via financial hardship for her if she was unable to operate. So it would be something that would be a great benefit to her and the community if she were able to operate during these next six weeks. And I thank you for your attention. And is there any questions that I can answer for any of you on this? Okay. I look forward to being on the agenda and hopefully we can do something with that. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. And John Aimbridge? You're on later.
I misunderstood, you actually have an item. Is that okay? I'm not here to talk about the--
Oh, you're not here to talk about the two applications? No, then please come forward. And you were just--
I apologize, sorry. So I know that, so I'm here for the Enriching Utah Coalition, and I know that we have been here before on various occasions. They asked me to come back tonight just to remind the mayor and the city council that we are still very much involved in what is going on in West Valley City in regards to our refugee and immigrant population and are still very interested in working with you on three key points. And I just want to read those very quickly. "The police department of the city of West Valley shall not use any city funds or resources to assist in the enforcement of federal immigration law. No police officer shall make arrests or detain individuals based on administrative warrants for removal entered by U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE, into the National Crime Information Center database. And lastly, sweeps intended solely to locate and detain undocumented immigrants shall not be conducted in West Valley City. WVC Police Department staff will not participate in ICE organized sweeps to locate and detain undocumented residents." I know in the past it's been a position of the city council and mayor that these things are already in practice. And we are asking that a written statement be issued to, to be made public so we have something to reference and to hold the city accountable for these things if that should change down the line. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Was there anyone else here to speak on an issue? If not, we'll move on down. Let's see. That was the public comments. So, city manager, do you have any comments you'd like to add?
No, sir, thank you.
Council members? Okay. On the issues that are brought up to us, let's see, there were two there. And the food trucks. And that does seem to warrant some additional discussion. That one will be placed on our study meeting agenda for next week. And then on, okay. And then on the, what would I term an immigration one, we've had a lot of discussions on that. Is there a desire to put that on the schedule? Or on our study meeting agenda for next week? Since we've discussed that several times in our--
Mayor, I think since we have discussed it several times and since the policy and procedure manual for the police department includes statements almost directly the same as, and that's what the police go by, I don't think there's a need to put it on the agenda.
And that particular, that manual is available to the public, is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So a public document has been, or is made and written in procedures for the city, for our police department. That procedure is available to the public, to anyone who would wish to review it. And we would be happy to be held accountable for those issues because that is our policy. We already hold our police department accountable for those issues. So we would encourage you, those who are interested, to review those. If you're not able to find them, just contact our office and we'll make reference to where you can find that. It's on our website, I believe. Maybe?
I'm not sure the policy and procedure manual is on the website. It's a, but certainly anybody who made any inquiry to us, asked about it, this is the gentleman did, and as we point them to that, make them aware of it, and also give copies of anything that they needed along those lines, Mayor.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
May I make a comment?
Sure.
Yeah. We're at the council comments right now. Okay, good, thank you, Mayor. I, I think, I didn't speak much about this last year, so maybe just to use my time for this year. I just want to share with you guys about my personal story, maybe to illustrate the point that the gentleman just in this that you made about ICE and U.S. Immigration Office. I crossed the ocean from Vietnam and finally I was ended up in Philippines. And they brought me to a refugee camp called Balawan Camp in Philippines and I stayed there for two years. And you could see many things that happened in, that came for two thousand people, about half a swim mile. You can, you could see everything there. I mean, killing people, fighting each other because of the small piece of broccoli or just small pocket of water. But I kept myself very, very busy. I was volunteering to work for the Food and Crime Commission. And about four months after that, the U.S. allegation, they came by and they interviewed me. But they rejected me because I didn't have enough documentation to prove that I'm the, I was, or I am the son of, of, I mean, the soldier from South Vietnam. Because the soldier from South Vietnam sponsored by U.S. government and that I had the privilege to go to U.S. by, under their circumstances. So I walked out of that office and wait, and wait, and they, and the ladies, she said, her name is Pam, I still remember her name. Just a time, I would love to help you out. There's nothing I can help you because you have only one future here. You cannot, anybody can come here and tell me is this person in that picture right here that they're there. So I cannot help you out. I stayed there for two years and I left the refugee camp Balawan in 1988. And right up to 1988, the United Nations, they closed all the refugee camps around the world. Hong Kong, Malaysia, Thailand, Philippines, Indonesia, Singapore, everywhere. And I thought I got out on time. But I was lucky. I, I wait and wait about a year and a half, and then the big fight was brought out in Philippines. The general in Philippines tried to overthrow the government. So the battle between the government and the general. Gunfire was exchanged, tanks was on the street. And so close by to our camp. And the United Nations, they were concerned about the people, the refugees here can get hurt. So they said, "Anyone had the first interview would let them to have the second interview." So I was able to have the second interview. The second one was, they called my name and I walked in on the door and her name, hers, a different person, it's not Pam anymore, but a different person. And she said, "Well, you could go now." I said, "Well, I'm still waiting for paper from my mom in Vietnam and she can send her stuff to me so I can prove, you guys, I'm the son of, you know, the soldier who fought for South Vietnam and sponsored by U.S. government." And she said, "No, you don't have to do that. I have enough information about your dad, so you can go." A few months after that, they closed, they closed all the camps like I mentioned earlier. And they asked all people from the refugee camp in that Balawan camp to go back to Vietnam. Some, they volunteered, went back to Vietnam. Some fought with the guard, went to jail. Other committed suicide in front of the, the guard. And the rest of the people there, the rest of the refugee there, they had to stay back there for fifteen years. Fifteen years. No place to stay because the United Nations took that piece of land back. And the nun from the Catholic Church went around and asked for money and God-livered money and bought a small land for the people in that nearby refugee camp. And the rest of people, about fifteen hundred, stayed there for fifteen years. Didn't have a job. They went out on the street, tried to sell something, whatever they, they could so they can, they could have money to support for themselves for fifteen years. Finally, they came here. Some came to U.S., some, most of them went to Canada. So people, they talking about immigration. I kept it for a long time because last year that happened, they came over here and they talked about it. But I thought, maybe I wait and wait and I can share with them later. I was in that situation. I could see people die, I could see people got killed. People may commit commitment or done something wrong or they commit suicide. I saw those. I saw those. To be honest with you, I love this country. I love this country very much. It's not a perfect country, but it's a great country on earth. I believe you know that and we know that. And I believe here, in our, in our administration here, people here, working here, very, very good people. And I think you can work them out with the staff and see them something better that way than we go direct to us because I, I have been through that. I can see both sides. But I would love to see someone stay in the line and get the ticket, wait for a call, their name and their number, and get the interview accepted or rejected to come over here. That's my personal moment I want to share with you. I think I love you all personally. I've been through a lot in my life. I always try to do my best. Very tough for me, very difficult for me. Came here with no English, different culture. But I worked my, my way up every day. I did not want, or I do not want, to do anything to make this society be a burden and a sorrow because I'm tough. No, I do not want to have that problem. And I'm grateful for your minute, your second, to come here and share that information with us. And I believe that you can work with our staff. And I says that my philosophy and my belief, it has to be fair. That's very much of me, Mayor, that's what I'm done.
Thank you, Councilman June, we appreciate your comments. Thank you for sharing that. As he was doing that, I realized that many of you may not have been here when some of these previous discussions were held, which there were multiple discussions. Maybe just a couple of items to summarize. Many immigrants settle in West Valley for two reasons. One, there's a lot of affordable housing here. Second, they're welcome here. When our police go out on a call, they do not ask about their status. They're there to investigate crime, to protect the public, and to treat everyone equally. I wish we had enough excess time and everything and so many police officers that we could assign them different tasks, but we don't. Our officers are fully occupied with enforcing the laws of our community and keeping them safe. They do not target any particular group. They simply do their job the way they have been professionally trained. Many of the issues that were brought up in those discussions were issues that didn't even apply to our city. In fact, occurred outside of our city as I visited with those individuals after our council meeting. We take very seriously the right of human life and the right of individuals to live. And so our policies reflect that and we're happy to put those under scrutiny to anyone. But we also support the laws of the land. We typically do not go on any particular raids or efforts of along those lines unless we are required to do so by federal law. Under federal law, then we will comply with what we must do. But we have created a community where, I think the official census had it about forty-five percent considered classified minority. Now, not all of those were immigrants, but a very significant portion were. So lest you think that we're not giving this appropriate consideration, it has been studied and discussed and we reviewed the policies that we currently have in place. We feel those do address those issues and we're happy for anyone, the media or interested individuals to review those and give us any feedback. We're always looking for ways to improve the safety, the well-being of our city and all those who are here, whether they live here, visit here, work here or whatever their situation, we apply or deal with all of them equally. So with those comments, that was for most of you who weren't here for those discussions. So we just reiterate those. Did I leave anything else, council members? Okay. Now, we've got that. That will not be on our agenda list for next week. We will now go to public hearings. So many of you are here for this. This is application GPZ dash two dash twenty seventeen filed by Kenneth Olson. This is a general plan change. It's a zone change and a development agreement. So we will also include in our discussion ordinance eighteen dash oh three. That's what we will use to accomplish these. Ordinance eighteen dash oh four and resolution eighteen dash one five. So all of those will be a part of this discussion. This is for property at thirty-seven fifty-five south, fifty-four fifty west. It will change the zoning on that. The proposal is for, I think it's seven additional lots, retaining the one existing homes on these, on this piece of property. And it will change, it's currently zoned agricultural. It will be changed to our RE residential estate type of zoning. And then the land use from rural to large lot residential. So that's the issue that is before us. There will be further discussion on the specifics of the homes and their design. But if you're here to speak on this, I will now open a public comment period for this. And since most of you, I think you all indicated you're on this one, I'm thinking. So we'll start with those who've actually signed up or where. Was there, Mr. Pyle, was there any additional information that need to be presented here?
No, sir.
Okay. But we have prepared so that if there needs to be called up a map or anything or any information, you can get to that, okay? So we would invite you to come forward, introduce yourself into the microphone. I think Julie Fisher was first on the list.
I'm Julie Fisher. I live at thirty-seven sixty south, fifty-four fifty west. And just before I begin, I want to say, I taught adult BSL for my career and many of my students were refugees from Southeast Asia. And I heard your story many times. I'm glad you're here. And excuse me, and I, this is really bad Cantonese, but don't pay the chore. And I have no idea what you, anyway, as I said, I'm Julie Fisher. I live on property that has been in my family for more than a hundred years. Most of the property under consideration for a zoning change is directly across the street from my home. So I have a keen interest in your decision. I, I do know that my cousin Kathleen Christopher and her husband Jay Christopher need to divide this area and, and sell it. And I support them in doing that. However, I do not want to see a zoning change. The planned change from rural residential to large lot residential zoning and the subsequent new subdivision and cul-de-sac will damage the character of our immediate neighborhood. Twenty horses still pasture on another cousin's three acres. Most of the remaining twenty acres that were part of the Woolston Home Evans family farm are on an acre or more of property. One is on a half acre and three are on three-fourths acres. And all of these are in compliance with the zoning that has been in place for many decades. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. Because we have such large lots, it allows us to retain the semi-rural aspect of our community. And in fact, families, some of whom are here, have moved to our section of the street specifically because it does have that rural, open atmosphere. And this is a sensitive family matter, but three acres, I mean, three homes per acre and a cul-de-sac, as requested by Kenneth Olson and the Christoffers, would destroy the distinct atmosphere that has defined our small community for several generations. Our property values would be reduced and the quality of our lives diminished. Please do allow the Christoffers and Kenneth Olson to develop the acreage, but please do so within the current zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, I think it's Stacia?
Stacia.
Stacia, Stacia, okay. I butcher them all, so Ireland, so please come forward. But we'll get it right, you'll, you'll correct us.
My name is Stacia Ireland and I live at thirty-seven fifty south, fifty-four fifty west, also across the street from this property. I have come tonight to speak against the proposed zoning changes to thirty-seven fifty-five south, fifty-four fifty west. I also have some questions that I hope will be answered tonight. There is a certain appeal to this section of West Valley City that is hard to find anywhere else. Family and friends love to visit us here because of the open space. Even repairmen and contractors who come out to our house are amazed that space like this exists in the middle of the city, especially one so close to the busy intersection of fifty-six hundred west, thirty-five hundred south. When my wife and I first heard of the proposed changes, we went around and talked to our neighbors, most of whom were also opposed to these changes. They too liked the open space. My wife and I also took pictures of the homes and lots along this street and presented it to the planning committee back in December. These homes are on half acre or larger lots. The open space is why these people came here and built their homes. Number one, the proposed change would have eight houses on land that by current zoning could only have four. This was staved by Stephen Pastrick in a planning committee in January. Doubling the amount of homes on land is not keeping open spaces, which I understand, Mayor Bigelow, that you are in favor. Erecting a monument in front in, in order to make these homes more appealing or somehow more classy, I think is ludicrous. The monument would represent a, would represent a gate to a gated community and mini subdivision, which is far from the concept of open space. Would the city consider not erecting a monument if this plan is, is passed? Second, I am also concerned about the increased traffic that eight houses would bring. Fifty-four fifty west is a narrow neighborhood street with not much in the way of sidewalks nor the room to add them. We already have problems with people speeding through this section because it's a long straight stretch. Would the, would the city consider strategically placing speed bumps along this stretch? And third, I understand the city is wanting to keep the trees along this property as much as possible. These trees have been poorly maintained and present safety issues. Most recently, a large branch over a foot in diameter broke and fell across the road from the weight of snow. Cars were not able to get through the street until my brother-in-law took his chainsaw and cut the smaller branches, moved them away and actually cleared away a byway through using his driveway so that cars could get through. A few months earlier, a young man was mowing the lawn when a branch fell and another, a large branch, at least eight inches in diameter. Fortunately, he was, he had passed before the branch fell, so it did not hit him. He would have been seriously injured if that had happened. I also just recently, just tonight, found out, these are Siberian elm, which my understanding is are only supposed to live forty to sixty years. These trees were planted by my father-in-law when he was a young boy. So these trees are at least eighty years old. So my question would be, who would be responsible to maintain these trees? Would this be maintained by the city or would it be the responsibility of the homeowners along this property? I do not oppose the land being sold and developed as currently zoned. Doing so would help preserve the uniqueness and openness of this neighborhood. Please help us keep this open space and charm around this small neighborhood alive. Please do not pass the zone change. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, it's J.L. Christopher. It took three of us, but we finally got your name right. It took three of us, but we finally got your name right.
My name's Jay Christopher. I live at thirty-seven ninety-one south, fifty-four fifty west. My, our property boundary is the south side of this property. I also represent the longer family as part of the family. Now, this property has been in the family for a long time, that is very true. But things has changed. These one acre lots that was available or half acre lots which was available twenty years ago, there's one sitting down the street that's been for sale for over a year and it has not sold. These lots are third acre, which you stop and think about it, is a very large lot in West Valley City. The integrity of the neighborhood, by going over the plot plan, it falls right into these categories where it would make a nice neighborhood. The plans, the cul-de-sac, who wouldn't prefer to live on a dead end cul-de-sac than on a street that carries major traffic when something happens on fifty-six? We as a family think this is the best plan. We've had other offer for the property for different designs and different uses. And we feel this is closer to what we'd like to see. And we, I've lived there since nineteen sixty. And I plan to live there another twenty years. So it's not sell and move type of deal. It's what we think is best for the family and the neighborhood. And I think that when the other neighbors around speak, you'll see that we're not alone on this. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Doyle Griffith. Doyle R. Griffith. Didn't stay? Okay, how about Jason Hanson?
My name is Jason Hanson, as you've stated, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that. I've lived, I purchased, my wife, my family and I purchased a home in West Valley City back in two thousand and four. We lived in Amanda Acres. And then recently, as of June, we purchased a home on fifty-four fifty. We also live across the street, it's a large piece of property. And I've listed my address there, I won't state so. The reason we moved to the street is, as stated by the family members, is the open space, we like it. And there is a large piece of property which we purchased, which adds to personal privacy and a lot of development and opportunity. And as the prior folks have said, this, the appeal to that road, it's like a, well, it's a hidden gem in the middle of West Valley City. You can't find another place that I'm aware of like it. And we would love to see the open space stay as it is, however, change does happen. And I represent a neighbor who plans on being there for a long time. I believe you said you could show some of the plans on your projectors, is that correct? So could you show us the zoning where it looks like a T with all those properties around it? Well, it's on the spot here, but this is what I've come to comment about. As Mr. Christopher stated, the lots that he has and there's a number of lots, there is at least one other lot I'm aware of on the street that's been trying to sell. And my understanding is that the Christoffers have been trying to sell for a while. There's a subdivision proposition where it has the half acre lots in eight segments? My point here is this, and if you, if you, my point is what I saw, I came a while back, or I came back in your December meeting and I saw that original proposal that would meet the criteria, which I'm hoping you'll be able to show. My point being is this, the first proposal that I saw for the property had a road going in and then splitting into a T. That's Mr. Olson's proposal. There was another proposal that wasn't quite like that, that's the one there actually, if you back up. When I saw this proposal, my first thoughts were this, hey, these are standard lots, easy to maintain and easy to oversee and enforce property. However, aesthetically for the street, I don't think this would be a good plan because we would lose that open space feel. Now, if you turn to the prior picture of Mr. Olson's proposal with the cul-de-sac, when I saw this... when I saw this, I said, that has a better option of feeling like open spaces the street should and does feel at present. Now, I'm with, my neighbors here, I would love to see this field stay afield and remain open. However, if progress is going to happen, and there's another three-acre property to the north of me that I suspect may in the future go to this, I would rather see a plan like Mr. Olson has presented to keep that feel of open space. Now, I'm not going to pretend to represent my other neighbors, but I do know this. I appreciate the open forum that you brought here. I appreciate the street and this gem that I live on, and I would like to keep it that way. And so keeping some of the large trees and maintaining them, a good issue that Stacia has brought up, is an issue, to which I've heard that the developer would basically clean it up and give them a good start to continue on. They would also plant additional trees, which would add to the feel of the street. And lastly, the properties that would come in there, or the homes that would be put upon those properties if this ordinance consideration amendment would, they would add to the street. And our hope is that the type of property that is being proposed, a large home, would bring the type of people that would help enhance the future both of that street and our city. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And then John Beanbridge.
Hi, good evening. First of all, thank you for the introductions this evening. It was a good moment to reflect and remember what's really good about all of us, wasn't it? So, my name's John Beanbridge. I am the son-in-law of Shirley Fonger, one of the family members who would stand to benefit from this transaction. And I recognize this is a very emotional issue. A lot of folks have long histories with this community and a lot, a lot of time on the family, on the property. My children spent a lot of time on the property, swinging under the apple tree, right? Everyone's got this very emotional attachment to this property. And I recognize as well the value and the appropriateness of the feelings of people to try to maintain a feel that we've all enjoyed over the last several decades. However, that feel shouldn't come at the cost or at the expense of the family members who currently own that property. The former owners of the property, Fred and Beth Fonger, their intent for that property was always to provide a benefit to their children who are in the room today, two of whom are widows. So it was always their intent to use this property for their benefit. So a few points that I'd like to just make that I think help to make this clear why this is a good proposal is, one, we should remember communities evolve, all right? No property is ever established for a time immemorial as that is the only use that they'll ever have. The proposed developments in keeping with the development within the rest of the community. So as we've seen that community evolve over the years, this changes in keeping with that development plan. There are a number of benefits to the community that come out of this as well. One is that these are nice homes. This isn't an organization coming in and dropping in low-value homes. These are, these are nice homes that will add to the tax base of the city and also provide some much-needed housing for a growing community, a growing economic community in the Lake Park area where people have a hard time finding quality housing in the area. And then finally, the right reason to do this is that it's, it's just the fair thing to do, isn't it? These are, the people who stand to benefit from this are people who are at a point in their life where they really, they really need the funds that would come from this transaction. And it just seems, just seems a little bit wrong, doesn't it, to deny them those funds at this point in their life? Thank you for your time.
Okay, that was all that was on the list. Is there anyone else here who is here to speak to this issue? Yes, come up.
Does the applicant, should we go last, or? We had a PowerPoint we wanted to do. Were we able to?
Mr. Pile?
They can still go anytime they want, Mayor.
Yeah, and as far as-
As far as time goes, yeah, we can put the PowerPoint up for him at any point.
What would you prefer?
Well, no, it's up to you. We just, whoever wants to speak, speaks. You're the only one that raised your hand, so you may be the last. Unless someone wants to comment on what they see from you.
So my name's Ken Olson. I'm the one that's made the offer on the property and been in development for a few years, so sort of were able to pull that up. Yeah. So we fell in love with the property and we, you know, we put a lot of thought into the design and we, I mean, I'm a tree guy, and I told the staff that I didn't want to be involved in this property unless I could preserve the trees. And so that is one thing that, what the city council, because of curb and gutter stuff, you know, the city council, I think, would have to give the staff some direction as to whether we can accomplish that or not. So, you go to the next slide. So this is the front of the property. I took these pictures last summer, so you're familiar with how it looks when the leaves are on the trees. Go ahead and go to the next one. And this is some development that took place that had some half-acre or a bit larger lots that a few years ago, I think they might have been required to take out the trees. So that's your larger lot, and, you know, it can have that look. It's a beautiful home and everything, but it, in our opinion, it doesn't preserve what we're trying to do out there when everyone talks about preserving the special feel of the, of that end of the road. Go ahead and go to the next one, please. So this is some, a home where the trees have been left in. They've really cleaned up the, it's really nice over to the trees from the asphalt. Go to the next one, please. We probably don't need it like that. Everyone's looked at it a few times, so. So some of the development, sorry, I guess this will turn. The development objectives, you know, maintain the natural beauty of the setting, including the wooded country lane, maintain a safe, pleasant, and desirable environment, establish and preserve harmonious design for the community, and we'll talk about that, but I think we have, and promote and preserve property values of the community. So, I mean, the homes that we're building will be between, for that size of home and the lot and everything, the minimum's going to be four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, probably closer to five hundred thousand dollars. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's a good-sized home, and they'll probably even go beyond that, but, so it's a very expensive home. You know, we have some challenges coming in off Thirty-Fifth and, you know, on that end of the road, there's some, you know, smaller, older homes and parked cars and things. So there's a little bit of a challenge there, even though when you get down to where we are, we do feel like it is a gem. I wanted to talk about the trees a little bit. So there's a pretty long design guideline book. It's about probably fifteen pages, I think. I'll just go over the trees, because everyone seems to be, "Tree removal is to be avoided wherever, whenever possible. No tree removal is permitted outside of the approved building envelope and hardscape requirements designated on the submitted site plan. Trees along fifty-four fifty lane will remain and be maintained by the homeowner with the direction of the Architectural Review Committee. No removal of any existing trees without written permission from the Architectural Review Committee." So nobody can take out any trees along there without approval and a real reason, because the whole purpose is to preserve that feel. Similarly, the green belt, because there's a lot of trees along the east line of the subdivision, will remain. No tree removal will be permitted in that area without permission. They can trim them up, they can, you know, clean them, and they can enhance them, but they cannot remove them without permission unless there's a special reason. And there's absolutely no topping of any trees, because topping of trees is not right. So, and then the other thing, can you go to the plan, our green, or one more? Yeah, that's great. So this is the plan. So what we've said is we would preserve all the trees out front and keep the country lane. And we have three lots out on fifty-four fifty. So the older home would remain right where it's at, and north of that would have one lot. And we've made it a forty-foot setback, so it's a little deeper, so it gives it a big front yard. So, and then down on the south of the entry to the cul-de-sac, there's a one lot which has a side, so that actually provides more green space and more open feel than if you were to do half acres. We've laid it out with half acres. In half acres, you'd have four houses that face the road, and then we've laid it out, you'd have a driveway back to a few lots back in there. So the half acres, whether it's half acre or this zone change, and one of the two is what's going to happen, that doesn't preserve the feel of the road or anything any better than what we're doing. What we've done is tried to take the natural beauty and the heritage there and make a great community that fits in, and we know it's going to be changed, but, so a few of the things that we've done with our plan here, if it'll just begin. So we, we believe in adding to and enhancing with the trees. So all throughout the subdivision, the park strip, we've got a larger park strip on the south around the cul-de-sac, that have to plant new trees on thirty-foot centers, and that has to, so the whole street will be tree-lined. So not only will it be on fifty-four fifty, but it'll turn into there. The other thing that we've done is there's two lots that are back in the corners, and we've got little meandering driveways, which we think are really add-character, and those are required to have trees and be tree-lined. And then when you get back in there, everywhere you can see the trees is where they're required to put in shade, the variety shade tree that we haven't decided on yet, because we've got to make sure we get the right one for the area. So not only are we preserving the trees, but we're plant, having them plant a lot of trees with their landscaping. Secondly, we think we're creating a community with this plan. So, I mean, it's just a desirable little street to live on. It's a little cul-de-sac. It's only a couple hundred feet long. So one of the things in the cul-de-sac, or in our development, which we do in all of our developments pretty much, is there's no front yard fencing, so it'll have that open feel. You can't put any fence in front of ten feet behind the front plane of the house. So that will give this cul-de-sac a nice, open, hopefully a park-type feel with the trees, and that, that's really a big thing. And then we've got strict in our, in our covenants that there's no parking other than on the main driveway, your main vehicles. You can't put an RV on the side of the driveway. It has to be behind a fence behind the house. So it'll stay clean, you know, somebody can't go put in a big gravel thing and park a trailer there. So we want this to have a real nice open feel that ties in with the trees. We're trying to give it that feel of something you'd see, you know, maybe up in the Mill Creek area with all the trees and the open feel in the front. The lot layout, they're very similar in size to the half acres. I've got, actually, where I live, there's thirds, halves, and ones, and on the street you can't tell the difference, but they're basically the same width. A half acre's a hundred feet minimum, and all of ours are a hundred feet. We do have two that are right around ninety, they average ninety-two and a half, those two on the left. Because of the way the house is and that, we've asked for a little bit of a variance on that. But they're still all real wide lots. Everything will have a third car garage. You know, the housing standards are very large. So we, we think it would be a real nice subdivision and community, because we just don't think that half acre space in the road really creates a nice feel and community. It's really two lots is the difference between it. So can we go to the last or a couple more? So the city, from what we understood, is they require, and we usually do monuments into all of our developments, this is a small development, so the monument would be on the south side behind the trees as you turn in to the, to the cul-de-sac. So, you know, it wouldn't be out there, it would be small. Well, that isn't that small. Some of the neighbors have asked us to make it smaller, and we would accommodate them. But if we go to the next slide, so this is a fence that I did on a property out in Bluffdale where we did, we preserved a bird refuge area, and I've got this about four thousand feet around this area. But this fence on Lot Eight, which is the one on the south side of the road, is the corner lot, this fence would go, we originally thought that the city would want a sidewalk or trail behind the trees on the east side of them, so you'd have your nice road, and then it would tie into the trees and then a trail behind it. And then this fence would go from the monument and tie into the monument and go south behind the trees. So we think that would give it a real nice open feel behind the, behind the trees. And there's a lot more in the covenants, but that's pretty much our design, and we just think it creates a great community and a beautiful little, little subdivision that just enhances what's there, and we think it is, we think it's better than the designs we've come up with with half, with the current zoning. We think it's just a better community. So, I don't know if you have any questions? Yes?
So what size houses are you planning on building?
Well, the minimum on, in the, in our covenants is, I think it mirrors the city code, but it's two thousand square feet on the main level with a third car, three car garage minimum. And then, of course, you'd have your basement, so it's basically four thousand square feet minimum on the ramblers. The two stories are three thousand square feet minimum, finished above grade, and we've got in here seventeen hundred square feet on the main level minimum. And so with that, and probably a seventeen hundred square feet in the basement, you're looking at about forty-seven hundred square feet. The reason, and I don't know if that was code or not, but we like to put a little bigger footprint on the two stories, so they just don't stack up fifteen hundred and fifteen hundred. We like to get a little bigger footprint, so they don't look like stacked boxes. So, but, you know, we've been doing houses that we've been building in different markets, and we've been doing eighteen hundred square foot ramblers with three car garages, and, you know, we've been pricing out at four-twenty-five, so I can't imagine we're going to be doing this for under four-fifty to five-hundred, so.
So after you've built all the homes and left, who will make sure all the covenants are followed?
We, yeah, we'll have to have, they'll have to have an Architectural Review Committee where they appoint somebody, so.
So if they decide to change those ordinances so that they can park their RVs in front of the tents?
Well, I think it's a city, I think it's a city, I think it would be in the development agreement tied in with that, so I think in order to change that, they would have to come back in. I mean, there's always that possibility. I can't predict the total future. I would hope, you know, it's really up to neighbors to, on that committee, to keep it nice. I mean, so, but that's, that's what we do in all of our higher-end developments. We have stuff like that. I mean, I've got, we've got covenants where people can't park on the streets on a long-term basis. There's no overnight parking on the streets. And, you know, if someone starts parking on the street, it really is up to another neighbor to, to say something or bring in action or talk to the, to the committee. But, you know, that's part of trying to do something nice, is you can't have people that don't obey the rules, so.
Any other questions? I have questions for staff. Anything else for this gentleman here?
Well, I guess I have one question. So you wanted stucco on the sides and the rear?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So we haven't, I mean, we don't allow stucco this, right now, so.
Yeah.
Not really liking the stucco idea.
So my thinking on the stucco and, you know, I don't know, maybe ordinance doesn't allow it, so I guess that's, it's very, so I'm building million-dollar homes. I've sent some pictures over of one and out in Bluffdale, they're all, you know, million to million-three, and they're all stucco on the back. on the backs and most of the sides. So when we first came in there, we wanted thirty percent of stucco on the front, but what happens when you eliminate stucco? I can talk, I mean, I have ivory homes that I've talked to, and they're just like, we don't want, we're not gonna do any developments, it just doesn't work. It adds fifteen thousand dollars on a home, you can't, it's the side and back, it's just a matter of taste. So what happens is, you take, let's say it's a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, so all of a sudden you wanna put, you know, different elements and not have stucco on the back or the sides. So you're four sixty-five, and people are having a hard time with what they can afford. So then what happens is they end up not doing the granite countertops, they end up not doing the hardwood floors, and so it's, gives them a product that is not a better product in their opinion, because they don't have this nice home, they don't have, you know, the stucco or hardy on the back or sides, there's no added value. If you get an appraisal, it won't appraise for a dime more, it won't say a dime, but it's basically the same, sorry, that's a little bit of a stretch, but it's not gonna change the appraisal hundreds of dollars, because it just doesn't add value. And so what it does, in our opinion, is it really limits people, you know, to afford a bill, to, you know, be able to buy a house in there. I mean, the other thing is you gotta get appraisals, I mean, it's difficult to get appraisals for four hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes in certain areas, because they can't find comps. So it just, it just is a snowball effect, it doesn't, in our opinion, make the house home nicer. We did take and get rid of all the stucco on the fronts in our covenants, we took Lot Eight and made it, because that's the one that's the corner lot, we made that where it could have no stucco, so... You know, we really feel it's pretty important to the market to be able to at least have it on the sides and rear. With a half a percent interest rate on a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, you're looking at a couple hundred dollars a month increase in payment, I mean, it just, you know, it all adds up, but it really takes away from, when someone's coming in and they're saying, can I afford to do granite countertops, or can I afford to do wood floors, or some other nice things inside? It takes away from that when they're making choices. And we understand that the city doesn't want a lot of stucco, that's why they got rid of it on the fronts, but that's our feel on it.
Okay, anything else? I think there was another individual indicated they would like to speak, so thank you.
Thank you.
And so, yes?
Thank you for your time. I am Debbie, Debbie Fonger Bainbridge. The property in question is my grandparents' property. We are very emotionally attached to this property. We have been in the family since, well, my grandpa was the first one to even purchase the land, my great-grandpa.
My great-grandmother.
Yeah, my great, my great-grandma, my great-grandpa, the first ones to ever own it. And he divvied it up between his children during the depression in order to maintain and keep the land, but he couldn't afford the taxes. So I just want you to know that the family deeply cares about this property. We are emotionally invested. My grandmother died thirteen years ago, this month actually, and it's taken thirteen years for us to finally be at peace with a proposed plan. We've had other plans proposed to us, but this one, the one with the cul-de-sac, is something that we all agree on, and we want to maintain the integrity and the feel of the area, because that land is a part of us. It's like it's in our DNA. And so I ask that you please listen to the family, who have tried to maintain the property since my grandfather died in nineteen ninety-four. I don't know if you understand how hard it has been to maintain that much property, its irrigation water, those large trees. I know I'm speaking emotionally, but I want you to know that this is an emotional decision as well as a logical decision, and I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this?
Yes.
Michael Ivans, so I'm a proponent of preservation. I have an uncle with ten thousand acres in southern Utah, or excuse me, in southeastern Colorado. He farms and ranches in Blanding in the summer, he takes his cattle out to ten thousand acres in Colorado. When his grandfather died, the estate taxes at the time resulted in their hundred thousand acre farm or ranch being sold off in order to cover the cost of the taxes. So they were left with this measly ten thousand acres, but it isn't enough on which they can run their cattle, so they have to lease forest service land in addition to that. So ideally, in a perfect world, this would be a preserved place, but in the interest of the family's dollar and bottom line, and fulfilling the wishes of the Fonger family that first purchased the property and caring for their descendants, you know, they have the right to capitalize on that, as painful as that is for the rest of the community. You know, if there was a group of interested citizens that wanted to preserve it and raise the funds that the Fongers could receive, you know, the same value in the form of dollars, you know, that would be great. Whether there's an effort, a sincere effort to do that, I doubt, but in the interest of preserving the natural feel, I feel like this developer's proposal to have tree-lined, maintain the tree-lined, whether, you know, there are these trees or replacement trees, his development agreement with the city would require a replacement tree to be planted if any of these large trees were removed, so that you can count on the future looking like it has throughout these years. Whereas the houses to the north that his presentation showed, those are half and three-quarter lots, yet from the street, all you see is a curb and gutter, and, you know, it doesn't matter the size of the lot if the public doesn't get to appreciate it. In this case, the public appreciates only three lots, three homes along that stretch, and then where there's no home, a continuation of the trees down through the cul-de-sac to maintain that visual feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
I'll be very grateful. I just, I just want to reiterate that we are not opposed to the property being developed. We are opposed to the smaller lots, and I know people have talked about the bottom line being money. Sometimes money should not be the bottom line. I admit, I like Mr. Olson's plan better than the T, but I don't see why there can't be a compromise. And Mr. Olson talked about creating a community. We have a community, and it would destroy the existing one. And I'm not saying my cousin shouldn't develop it. I'm saying we don't want a cul-de-sac, we don't want twice as many houses as would probably be built in the existing zoning. And I imagine this is that my family won't get over, but it is obviously very emotional on each side, and I'm glad I'm not you, but thank you for letting me speak.
Okay, is there anyone else to speak on this issue? Looks like we have another one.
Yes, Kathleen Christopher. I am Fred and Beth's daughter. When my dad died in nineteen ninety-four, before he died, he talked to my brother Richard, who had his own surveying company in Nevada, and he said, Richard, I want to divide this land up now, before something happens to me. Richard drew up and with his company and some others, had a cul-de-sac. My dad was pleased with this. They went to West Valley City. The big problem was, Dad wanted this cul-de-sac to go in, but he wanted his property to be left out. West Valley told him, no, if you're gonna have that, you're gonna have to have a subdivision. Right after that, my dad had surgery, and after that, he had problems one after another. He died May the eighth, nineteen ninety-four. Nobody was expecting it. We were all there on Mother's Day, visited with him, went home. I told Jay, Dad looks good. My mother called up and says, come down and look at your dad, something's wrong. So we went down, my dad died. After my dad died, Richard, my brother, Robert, my brother, tried many different ways to get West Valley City to break up this property, but Mom didn't want the house to be part of that property, and West Valley had a code, if you're gonna break that off, you're gonna do a subdivision. So we talked to many, many, many people about how they could do this and what they could do. Nothing. People come up with great ideas, it looks good on paper, but I did not feel good, my brothers did not feel good about the proposals. This property has been in my family. My grandmother bought this property, and she had it. And after nineteen twenty-nine, they were gonna lose everything. My mother was going to Utah State, had one quarter left. She quit and she come home, she worked, she gave her parents her paycheck every year. Uncle Lee and Uncle Ed did the same. I don't know about Roland, because he was young. But this property has meant something to all of us. But I do know, and I've thought about this, and we, my brothers and I have tried and tried to work out things to make it better. This proposal, when I heard it, I said, Mom and Dad, is this the good one? And I could feel them with me. I could know that these people were honest, that I was not gonna have to worry about it, because I work for business regulations in real estate, and real estate people that I grew up with, that I knew, and some of the things they did, and they were called in, I did not trust real estate people. And so, when these guys come to me and we talked about it, I didn't just say, go ahead. I had to think about it, pray about it, fast about it, give it concern, and ask my parents, is this what you want done? And I know this is what my parents would have done, this is what my parents wanted. This is what my brothers, four of them, younger than me, all four of them, have passed away. I am the last. It is my decision to make for my sister-in-laws and their children, because their children are also involved in all this, because their dads died. I feel good about this proposal, I feel good about these people, they're honest, and I trust them, and every time they said, well, what about this, and I didn't feel good about it, they were willing to change. They are willing to follow West Valley's rules and regulations and not ask for something to be dismissed, but I feel like I'm the one, not my cousins, they built their houses, did what they wanted, they got theirs done. No, I would never, never have anybody build on that property that was not thinking about how nice it would be, and I'm the one that makes that decision, nobody else. But when I make it, and I've had dozens and dozens of people come up with plans and come to me, and come to my brothers, and we didn't feel right about it, but this time, I do feel right about what's going on, and I ask that you will take that into consideration. They're not going to destroy it, they're going to help it, because it needs help right now, and I need help, and I thank you for this time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Looks like we have another one. Oh, oh, he just, then, is that everyone? With that, then, we will close the public hearing portion, we'll bring it back to the council then. Ask some questions of Mr. Pastrick, please, maybe he could take the... Go ahead. Mr. Pastrick, there's been a lot of talk about trees being planted, trees cannot be removed, no fences, no parking, et cetera, but none of this is included in the development agreement, is that right?
That's right. So right now, what's in the development agreement relates to the design of the homes in terms of like square footage, and there's like one item on landscaping is in place to driveways. We could, if the council desired, include some requirements about planting trees, it's not in there currently, as Mr. Olson mentioned, in the covenants that he's proposing, he's included a lot of the standards that he's discussed. Historically, we have not put in the development agreement regulations dealing with the placement of fencing beyond what's in our own ordinances, or maintenance of trees again beyond what's in our own ordinances.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but a development agreement is for development, not for continued? For the next hundred years, you're not gonna do this or that, or...
It's really intended for the design of the subdivision and housing, and something we can enforce as part of the building permit or the subdivision application.
And so, I just wanna caution the council that we're not voting on promises or assurances that are not part of what we can enforce in the first place. In the second place, if these are included in covenants, we haven't seen the covenants, but if they are covenants and are recorded, the city's not going to enforce those covenants. That would be up to the next-door neighbor suing the neighbor if they knew of the covenants and cared enough about the covenants to sue the neighbor for having an RV in the wrong place or putting a fence up in front... or putting a fence up in front of the house so their dogs or other animals could run around in the yard. And so, you know, we, all we can do is manage the change of zoning, the change of the general plan, and what is required in the development and that property is sold and the developer walks away. Is that right?
As far as the, yes, in terms of the standards, again, in the development agreement, we've addressed things such as materials, house size, whether or not there's exceptions on, for example, lot width, those kinds of things. But as far as ongoing maintenance of trees or we can, we could address, for example, the type of fencing. We just have not typically put in, in a development agreement, standards that deal with the placement of fencing that go beyond what would happen in our own code.
And in fact, should we change the general plan and change the zoning? There's nothing that requires the property to be developed in the short term or that this developer couldn't resell the property or? All we've done is changed the planning and the zoning, right?
If we pass or approve the general plan and zone change with the development agreement, then at that point, the standards in the development agreement would be transferred to a future owner.
Right, but that's just for development. That's not trees, maintenance, fencing, future visions and so forth that we've been given assurances of today, but are not really part of what we're looking at.
So I'd say again, just as it relates to the development, as it relates to the design, like physical attributes of the project.
Thank you. That's all the questions that I have for you.
Can I follow up with just one? As I look back through our materials, there is a CCNRs and design guidelines attached. Are those the ones that we would accept if we accepted this?
So, so in this, those would be just private covenants that would apply, again, whether it's likely a homeowner's association that would be enforcing that. So those were provided so you could understand what they were trying to accomplish. But again, as staff, what I did in going through those, I looked for things that are, again, more physical attributes that we can include in a development agreement. And then as far as any kind of ongoing enforcement of like RV parking or things like that, that would be up to the homeowner's association unless, again, it violates something that's in our ordinance, something that we already have in our ordinance.
So is this being developed as an HOA?
There were needs, so the street that they're proposing is a public street. So the only purpose for an HOA would just be to main or to enforce those covenants. Thank you.
Looks like another question for Mr. Pastner.
So Steve, are the front fences going to be installed when the homes are built? Or will that be on the residence after?
My understanding, so we did not include anything in the development agreement about the requiring fencing to be put in. My understanding was more they wanted to have a provision that did not allow fencing in the front yards and that would be part of the covenants. But I don't recall, and Mr. Olson can correct me, but I don't recall them saying that they would actually install the fencing as part of the project. At least, well, they are proposing fencing along 5450 on the one lot that's the corner. But in terms of in-between properties, I don't believe they were proposing to install the fencing as part of the project.
So the fencing and the trees could, would not be obligated if this was sold to somebody else? Or they changed their minds later?
Right. Now, because those are things that could be enforced by the city. So for example, if having fencing was important to the council, that's something we could put in a development agreement because that's something that's, you know, a physical improvement. Same as planting new trees, that's something we have done in other development agreements before where you could, you know, say there's, you know, say two trees per house and I guess we inspect that as part of the whole inspection process. So any new improvements that are being made, those are things we could, but aren't currently in the development agreement.
Okay. Because on their presentation, the trees are on there.
Right.
And, but not the fencing. Okay. And then my other question is still about stucco. Our ordinance now does not allow it, correct?
Correct.
And then we just put those ordinances in about a year, year and a half ago. So we're pretty fresh on what we intended when we put that together?
Right, so it was in 2015 when the council made that change. The, so I made Mr. Olson aware of that. He still had requested, and again, the council could make that exception in the development agreement.
Take that out?
And actually make an exception to allow stucco in the size in the rear. But again, certainly not, you don't have to do that.
So I'm just trying to figure out if we wanna change the development agreement, if we try to do it tonight, or if we continue all the action items and get it figured out and then? So I'm kind of iffy on that one.
Well, the stucco is one of the seven items requested that were exceptions to policy.
And my thing would be to add the fences, the front fence just along the, because of the 10-foot setback behind the house, which is not part of our ordinances. Might be a great idea for the future. And then adding the trees in that are on their site line.
My understanding was that there would be no front yard fences to maintain the open nature of it.
Well, if there was a fence, it'd be 10 feet behind the front of the house to encourage. And what that does is just mainly give the feel that they were presenting to us. Where I've watched a lot of the neighborhoods that change their own CCNRs just because there's only eight of them and they held a site, eh? Let's find our, or park our RVs in front of the house.
Well, and who's going to enforce it?
Right, they have to enforce it on themselves, yeah.
So, you know, your question or thinking out loud, how do we proceed? You know, I'm more on the fence with the zone change than with the development agreement. I don't think the development agreement, and we're talking about tree-lined driveways and all kinds of things that aren't part of this development agreement as an encouragement to make the changes.
Oh, and the other thing was, how would this lay out if it was half acre? Would there be six homes allowed and would there be a private drive or a public street that would go back to those?
So if you look on the east side of the street, a little bit north of this part, where you have an example where property was developed as under the A zoning, the issue is because you have a 100-foot frontage requirement that you end up with lots at roughly three-quarters of an acre. But that's about the only way we can see how that would, that would lay out. Because, again, just because of the frontage requirement and just not having enough property in the back to even do some kind of a flag or anything like that. Yeah, we just didn't see how. And so likely what would happen is you would have four lots that basically just go the depth of the property.
And the depth of the property was almost 300 feet?
That sounds right. I don't, I don't recall off the top of my head that sounds right.
Yeah, I did the math once, but I didn't say that, so. So you would have the existing house, three new homes, and they would all be at least 300 feet deep?
Right, right, yes.
So an owner could not bring a subdivision plan, a plat, and said, "We wanna, we're asking to do flag lot or break it up so that they're not all lined along 5450 West?"
The issue we saw is terms of under the current zoning. So in an agricultural zone, by the time you, to get a flag stem in and a lot in the back, we just didn't see how that would, that would pencil under this scenario. Or if you were to keep the zoning the way it is.
So the developer was saying that he thought he could get six homes on this property with the current zoning. So that is not possible?
I don't, I don't see how that would be done. But we didn't, we didn't spend a lot of time as far as looking at, you know, possible without some of the current zoning. We did, in fact, one of the option, the T option was one of the staff that had as far as the zone that's being requested. But we really didn't spend a whole lot of time on the current zoning.
Four questions?
I have some more comments. I don't have any more questions for Mr. Pastner.
Anyone else for Mr. Pastner? Okay, thank you. And I also have a comment and one that I do need to make to clarify for at least three of the people who spoke. It's my standard one that I give. And that is, you spoke something about being able to derive maximum benefit financially on this process. So that you're aware, not only would it be unethical for any elected official to make a decision to financially benefit an individual or a group of individuals, it actually borders on illegal depending upon how that's done. So that issue must not be part of our discussion here among the council. So if we don't deal with that and we ignore it and we make no decision based on whether it's plus or minus for any individual, you'll understand why, okay?
Land use authority law actually says that we cannot make any decision for land use based on financial hardship.
Yeah. And I must admit also that the comments on the trees, I'm a little torn now because safety is also an issue. And so, my concern for preserving those trees must be tempered with the fact that I certainly don't want them to be preserved if they are unsafe. And I can't make that decision, so I'm just kind of torn.
Mayor, I have a couple of those large young trees in my yard. And when people tell me that they're trash trees, I say, "No, they're great. They're self-trimmy." At any given moment, we might have much of the tree in our yard.
Other comments?
I do have some comments, Mayor, if I may take a turn. First of all, I'd like to point out to you assembled here and anybody else that may tune into this that this is one of the great functions of local government. We are talking about three acres in a city of over 35 square miles. This is not a citywide issue. This is a very localized issue. And it's important to you and it's important to us. I'd also like to point out that no one is entitled to a zone change or a general plan change. If you were entitled to it, you wouldn't have to come and present your case to the city council in order to receive that change. That authority lies with us. And we try to do the best we can. And we will always have people that disagree with us no matter which way we decide. But we need to look out for the city as a whole. Even though we're talking about three acres, in our minds, we're looking out for 35 square miles of property. I went down this street. I was not familiar with it. It's a beautiful area in the city. And it made me grateful going down that street that a couple of years ago, we created the residential estate zone so that we're not looking at an application to subdivide this property into seven or 8,000 square foot lots or duplexes or apartment buildings, which are also found on that street. Go a little bit north or a little bit south and it's not the same as, as the area that we're talking about. So I think that we have lessened the problem. We're talking about two houses per acre to up to three houses per acre. We're not talking about 10 or 12 or something else. So I'm pleased with the work that we've already done. With respect to the trees, those large trees will die. And when they die, the trees planted to the north with the other developments will be big trees. Maybe not as big, I'm not sure what kind of trees they are. And maybe they won't be self-trimmy. It's important, I think, also to point out, we're not reviewing or approving any subdivision plot or plan today, whether it's a T or, or anything else. The development agreement just says there will not be more than eight lots and homes developed there. And as I pointed out before, approval of the general plan and zoning change does not prevent the property from being sold and something else being developed as long as it complies with the development agreement, which would run with the land. And, you know, those, those are my thoughts. I express those to you who have spoken or have interest in this and also to the council as we contemplate this. Frankly, I'm a little bit on the fence. As I stated before, I'm not, you know, in favor of being shown one thing and tree-lined driveways and so forth. And yet, that's not part of the development agreement. I'm more in favor, if I'm in favor at all, of going ahead with the zone change and the general plan change and rejecting the development agreement until it is everything that we've been promised. But then I think, well, why would we change the zoning and general plan when it's based on a development agreement that I would not vote to approve? So those are my thoughts. I'd be very interested to hear the thoughts of others.
I think that's kind of where I was going with making sure I liked the development agreement before and wanting to make a decision on the zone and the general plan. And right now, I'm not really pleased with the development agreement. I think it needs some tweaking. So I don't know that I wanna vote against it tonight in case we can resolve the development agreement issues. But I would not vote for the zone or the general plan with the development agreement as it is. That's why I was asking if the continuance of all three would be better.
It seemed to me that if we're not happy with the development agreement, which is based on the other two, then we need to continue all three until that development agreement is complete.
I concur. Still in the hands of the council.
If everybody's done the comments, I'll make a motion on the first.
Anyone else want to make?
You have to close the public hearing first.
Let's do that.
Okay. Close up?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Everybody's ready for a motion? All right. So Mayor, make a motion on ordinance 18-03 that we continue it to a date uncertain.
Second. Motion is before us. Any further comment? Seeing no further comment, we'll turn to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Fati Samanu?
Aye.
Councilman Malink?
Yes.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Hugh?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion for continuance passes unanimously.
Mayor, for continuance of ordinance 18-04?
Second. Property before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, to the city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Norfeld? Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hugh?
Aye.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Malink?
Yes.
Councilman Fati Samanu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion for continuance passes unanimously.
Mayor, for continuance of resolution 18-15?
Second. Property before us, any further comments? Seeing none, we'll go to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Fati Samanu?
Aye.
Councilman Malink?
Yes.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Hugh?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion for continuance passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you for all of come. Notice will be given in the near future when we will continue to debate that. And I'm sure there'll be interactions between staff and the developer and council members, so.
And there will not be another public hearing. Another public hearing is, it'll just come before us.
So everyone who had, had their chance at it tonight.
Okay.
Very well. Now, you're welcome to stay, but we're gonna go on to other business. Okay? Thank you. Let's see. Now we have application S20-2017 by Duo Afri. Final flat approval for the Kadija subdivision lot lot. This is at 2512 South Winston Lincoln Street, which is 1075 West. In that, we will consider ordinance 1805 as well. So this property is there. All my stuff back down. Get to where I need to be again. And this is property that has been purchased there. It's right close to the cemetery there by the, I guess it's the, I refer to it as a mosque. Is that a correct term, I assume? The, that is there. And so, this was- And so this will take and combine that into one property, is that right? There were two pieces and it's combined into one. That is the issue before us. This one seems to be a lot more quiet than the other one, so I'll just stop there and open the public hearing portion. Is there anyone here to speak to this issue?
Most of the people in the cemetery have lost their opportunity.
Yeah. If there's something you want to say, you're welcome to do that. If not, okay. Not seeing anyone here to speak to this, we'll close the public hearing portion, bring it back to the council for, to take, for consideration of ordinance 18-05.
Mayor, move for approval of ordinance 18-05.
Second. Property before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hugh.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang.
Yes.
Councilman Fetis Semenu.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Next, we go to resolution 18-16. This is to award a contract to RBI Incorporated for the construction of Phase 5 of Centennial Park. This is a contract for $421,350 will come from park impact fees. There were a number of bids. This is the one that was selected, the most responsible bid, and work will begin March 1st if weather permits and if it gets approved. That is the introduction to the bill to the council.
Move for approval of resolution 18-16. Second.
Property before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Fetis Semenu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang.
Yes.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Hugh.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Under our new business, this is to consider application S-21-2017 filed by the city requesting approval of the 6,200 South and 6,940 West street dedication plan. And, boy, I got to think back to, this is up by the fire station. And so there are some changes there. We're dedicating, or no, wait a minute, this is West, this is out by U 111.
It's U 111.
Yeah, U 111. So this is dedicating a portion of that road, and this is part of an agreement that we had made with the property owners there and with the building of that road to curve it around. And by making that curve, it changed the access to property, and so this is all part of that agreement. We'll finish that up. That's the introduction to the issue to the council.
Mayor, move for approval of application, or resolution?
Application.
Application S 21-2017.
Second.
Property before us, any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hugh.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang.
Yes.
Councilman Fetis Semenu.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we're on our consent agenda. There are four items, resolution 18-17, 18-18, and 18-19, our grants of temporary construction easement for properties around the fire station here on 4100 South or on this 72. On our sound record, I have to put at least, these are at about 40, this fire station about 4300.
4100 South, 4400 West, approximately.
4300 West.
Close.
Yeah. Okay, so that's the location, these temporary construction easements. I think this has to do with the wall or the fence surrounding that and other issues there as they finish that up. The final item, resolution 18-20, is a non-exclusive sewer easement with Kern's Improvement District. This is 5293 South, Upper Ridge Road, 6,400 West, and 5970 West, 5,400 South. And these, I think, were in connection with the two fire stations.
The new fire station.
The new fire station. And so, pretty straightforward.
Mayor, move for approval of the four items on the consent agenda.
Second. Property before us, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Fetis Semenu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang.
Yes.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Hugh.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
No further business? Then let's go home. Let's do a motion to go home.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes unanimously, we adjourn. Thank you all for coming.